October 17, 2011. Call roll please.
Stevens.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Herod. Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye. Most of the events will take place on October 29, Friday night. There is some carriage rides and some events at the Ritz Theater that night that are family orientated. It kicks off at 10 o'clock in the morning and goes until about 10 o'clock that night with many activities from a Boo Rod Car Show to pet costume contest to kids costume contest and a family costume contest and dancers and live entertainment, lots of good food. So we invite you all to come and join us.
Thank you very much and thank you to Safe Events for Families for putting this on for us yet again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, public hearing and considering ordinance rezoning property located at 1900 South Gordon Cooper Drive from A1 Agricultural to C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation. Case number P11-11, applicant react EMS.
Madam Mayor, the planning commission chose to defer action on this item until the November 3 meeting, so I would respectfully request the city commission to defer this item until November 7.
So moved.
Okay. Motion to defer this to November 7.
Second.
And a second by, I'm sorry, by Commissioner Sims, second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Thank you. Item number six, public hearing and considering ordinance rezoning property located at 422 West Rosa from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Case number P12-11, applicant Chris Sylvia. I'll open up the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this?
I'd like to.
Can you come forward to the podium? Give us your name for the record.
Florence Brooks. I live at 409 West Rosa, right down at the bottom where that parking lot's going to be built. And it has bad drainage and it floods down there every time it gets a heavy rain and it's flooded worse since they started with all the parking lots. But my property floods an average of about four times a year and this is just going to make it worse. And that's all I can really say is it's just going to make it worse on my property and make it where sooner or later I won't even be able to sell the house. That's all I got to say.
Can I ask you a question? Is your house the one that's right, is across the street from this property?
It's not right across the street.
And is it adjacent to the new parking lot?
It's down from the parking lot, down at the, right at the intersection of Rosa and Park.
Okay.
And the water drains down that hill and with all the parking lots, there's not enough land for it to soak and so it runs off. And my house happens to be the lowest property on that section and so it floods into my yard at least four times a year.
Okay.
And sometimes it stays underneath the house, sometimes it just makes a nice big mosquito pond in the backyard.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this?
My name is Chris Sylvia. I'm the applicant for Dr. Hoster. And I have a site map and civil engineering map or anything else that you may wish to see or review or answer any questions you have. We have addressed landscaping needs, watershed needs, as much as can be for our property. Can't be responsible for the whole street, of course, but we do meet all the current codes and layout of how the property should be done, how the parking should be fitted. Do you have a copy of the map or anything you need?
We have a lot of information in our packet. We certainly do.
If you don't have any further questions, I'll step down. If you do, I'll be here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing. Justin, can I ask some questions, please? I know that water runoff was an issue with another property that was close to there. How is that analyzed for, you know, for a use for this kind of property when it changes from residential to parking and how is all that analyzed? And is there, are the effects mitigated or not?
I think that they are to the extent possible. I think an important thing to remember is that this site has been developed previously. It previously had a single-family residence on it. It had a driveway. I think, I believe the driveway was paved, it may not have been, but, and the lot is also quite small, it's about 4,200 square feet. And so you've already had a significant portion of the property developed as impervious surface.
Hard surface.
Yeah. And so this conversion is essentially, you know, the house had been removed and now it will be concreted or asphalted the parking space and so there will be additional, there will be new impervious place, but there's also a fair amount of property on it. In fact, more than is required by code will be landscaped. And so I think when you look at the square footage, it's roughly equal. Like a lot of parts of town, we do have some issues here when it rains heavily. I know that as part of the Kickapoo Street project, you know, additional, hopefully some of the drainage can be mitigated through any new storm siren that's completed as part of that project, but, so I guess what I would say is that I don't believe that the problem will be made worse. The problem's not going to go away and we have localized flooding there currently. I believe we'll have that after this is developed, but I don't think it will have it any worse than the status quo.
And I think the other comment was made in here, not just the barrier between commercial and residential, but there was additional landscaping or an additional landscaping zone. So I suppose that is not impervious. So that is, like you were saying, almost like the residence that was there before with a hard surface that would have had a side yard probably?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, our zoning code is somewhat unique in that we really don't regulate impervious area. We regulate lot coverage, but it's really just the building footprint and so we might have a standard that says 50% of the lot can be occupied by structures and so a structure might take up 50%, but you could conceivably, of course, there are some landscaping requirements so you really couldn't literally do this, but you could, one could if they wanted to, you know, pave additional impervious area. And in most cases, we don't have a, there's not a code requirement either for a permit and so we, under some cases, we don't even have a way to review it.
So there is a drainage plan for the parking lot?
We do have a, we do have, they do have an engineered site plan and grading plan that will direct the water basically away from the immediate property to the east and then it will hit the curb network and then continue to proceed down the, down the street, which is what it's doing today, but within that vicinity.
So basically this falls into other construction that we would consider that says that if water is released at a different rate than what it was previous to this change.
Right.
Then some kind of containment may have to take place. I mean, this is still considered for this type of, I mean, a parking lot instead of a different structure?
That's correct.
All of that is still considered when this is approved?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's probably what you were thinking about too.
That's good.
You might have any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Once you get back to it.
That move to approve.
I second.
All right. A motion to approve by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Read the ordinance.
This is an ordinance concerning zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to with lots 21 and 22, block 31, Rose Garden Addition to the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the reported plat thereof, rezoning said property from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Thank you.
Item number nine, presentation from Amy Dunn of Gateway Regarding a Certified Healthy Community Grant.
Good evening. My name is Amy Dunn and tonight I'm representing the Potawatomi Alliance toward Community Health. We're an alliance that was created about seven years ago and we focus primarily on health-related issues primarily through policy change, working with businesses, city councils around the county. During this past several years, the city has been gracious enough to hear our requests and we have made tremendous strides in issues such as clean indoor air, youth access to tobacco, and also social host ordinances regarding access to alcohol for by youth. So we commend you for your efforts on those specific issues and what brings me here tonight is about a year and a half ago, I received the fortune to be appointed by the Speaker of the House to sit on a statewide committee that was going to develop criteria for the 2010 Certified Healthy Communities and Healthy Schools Act. You may hear of Certified Healthy Businesses has been around for a while. This is kind of an extension of that. One of the main issues that came about is that Oklahoma continues to rank in the bottom 10. We are currently 46th in health outcomes in the nation and the only reason we jumped from 49 to 46 is because we have good immunizations. So we are hoping to stay at 46 and rising. We have a tendency to be really well at football and in the top five, but we're in the bottom five as far as health outcomes. And so this initiative was basically to allow local communities to make changes at the local level so that they can protect the health of their citizens. And as a whole, if each community around the state begins to do that, we can dramatic, drastically change those outcomes. During this time, the past year and a half, we've been working on this criteria. Some of the things that came to my attention was that the community that I lived in, a number of the things that we wanted in the criteria, my community already had. And so I was very glad to see that we were already on the right route to making these things happen. And so now it's time, the applications are ready, the criteria's been set, and I'm here before you to tell you a little bit about that. In your package you received, there is an application that says Certified Healthy Communities Application. The actual application process is done online, but this is a PDF form of that. So somebody from the city would be responsible for making that application. Our coalition is more than willing to help advise you in that process because there may be specific things that deal with education or health marketing that you're not familiar with that are going on around the community, so we can partner with you to work on this process. The applications are actually due November 1st, so we are on a short timeline, but some of the main criteria that you're going to see are things that Shawnee does fortunately already have, like dealing with alcohol and tobacco. We have what we call Clean Indoor Air Ordinance in this community, which covers some of the indoor-related smoking issues. We also have in Shawnee, all of Shawnee Public Schools are called a 24/7 Tobacco-Free School. So that's as fortunate, you're in that criteria. This particular application weighs heavily on policies and ordinances that are passed within the community and fortunately, we have a number of these criteria already in the community. It also deals with things like farmers' markets, physical activity issues, safe routes to schools, walking trails, things that I know that we've been working on and we have actually passed, looking forward to the future of Shawnee. It also deals with, does your community actually do health assessments? And currently, there is a major health assessment that is being initiated in this area. It's called the MAPS Assessment and communities across the state are doing it and Shawnee happens to be one of them that's working on this particular issue. And so the questions that the city may not be able to answer, as an alliance, we can help you answer because our membership ranges from anything from people working with the Housing Authority to DHS, the Health Department, a number of business owners around the community. We also have a number of tribal partners that are on our alliance and so we all can bring together that expertise to help you answer the questions if you don't have the right answers. And then after the deadline for this, like I said, is November 1st and then the next step is in December, you'll be notified whether you qualify as a Certified Healthy Community or not. This is a designation and then there'll be an award process that will happen later on. But most recently, a funder by the name of the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust has come forward and put $3.3 million towards funding these Certified Healthy Communities. So if Shawnee receives this designation, we can actually qualify to make application for a grant. Through that grant process, you'll also see it, it's called the Bright Spot, it's the Healthy Communities Incentive Grants. And I say incentive grants because the idea is to incentivize you to continue on your wellness process so that you can do more things in the community. The money would be specifically to improve other health initiatives that you may already be wanting to do or to fund things that you have already on the books, but you don't have money to fund. So the money could go specifically to improving the health of the community. Specific criteria, you can also see some of the criteria that's listed on that grant application. And the grant application, it lists three different types of levels. There's a basic level, a merit level, and an excellence level. And the one thing that's nice is we're competing against communities that are of the same size as us, so we're not going to be against Norman or the metropolitan area, just communities that are in the same size as we are. So, you know, we may not be able to do what an Edmund can do, but we can do what other communities that are our size can do. And so we are actually considered a large community, which is a population of 30,000 to 79,000. And under that particular criteria, if we just meet the basic level of certification, then we could receive $10,000 in grant money. But if we meet a merit level, which is the next level up, the nice thing is it's actually a cumulative grant process. So you reach, you receive the 20,000 for merit plus the 10,000 for basic, so we actually could receive 30,000. And then the beauty of it is, is if we reach excellence level, which there could be a very possibility that we do, you receive the 10,000 for basic, the 20,000 for merit, and the 30,000 that's for excellence. So we could receive a total of $60,000 for one year. And then next year, we would renew again and then we would also reapply for the grant again. And so it is my understanding that the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust is committed to this issue and will continue to fund these grants at the local level. So I would like to highly recommend this council to consider this. This is something that I have a personal passion about, but I know there's a number of people in this community that are dedicated to- be specific things that deal with education or health marketing that you're not familiar with that are going on around the community, so we can partner with you to work on this process. The applications are actually due November 1st, so we are on a short timeline. But some of the main criteria that you're going to see are things that Shawnee does fortunately already have, like dealing with alcohol and tobacco. We have what we call Clean Indoor Air Ordinance in this community, which covers some of the indoor-related smoking issues. We also have in Shawnee, all of Shawnee Public Schools are called a 24/7 tobacco-free school. So that's as fortunate, you're in that criteria. This particular application weighs heavily on policies and ordinances that are passed within the community. And fortunately, we have a number of these criteria already in the community. It also deals with things like farmers' markets, physical activity issues, safe routes to schools, walking trails, things that I know that we've been working on and we have actually passed, looking forward to the future of Shawnee. It also deals with, does your community actually do health assessments? And currently, there is a major health assessment that is being initiated in this area. It's called the MAPS Assessment, and communities across the state are doing it, and Shawnee happens to be one of them that's working on this particular issue. And so the questions that the city may not be able to answer, as an alliance, we can help you answer because our membership ranges from anything from people working with the Housing Authority to DHS, the Health Department, a number of business owners around the community. We also have a number of tribal partners that are on our alliance, and so we all can bring together that expertise to help you answer the questions if you don't have the right answers. And then after the deadline for this, like I said, is November 1st. And then the next step is, in December, you'll be notified whether you qualify as a Certified Healthy Community or not. This is a designation, and then there'll be an award process that will happen later on. But most recently, a funder by the name of the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust has come forward and put $3.3 million towards funding these Certified Healthy Communities. So if Shawnee receives this designation, we can actually qualify to make application for a grant. Through that grant process, you'll also see it, it's called the Bright Spot, it's the Healthy Communities Incentive Grants. And I say incentive grants because the idea is to incentivize you to continue on your wellness process so that you can do more things in the community. The money would be specifically to improve other health initiatives that you may already be wanting to do, or to fund things that you have already on the books but you don't have money to fund. So the money could go specifically to improving the health of the community. Specific criteria, you can also see some of the criteria that's listed on that grant application. And the grant application, it lists three different types of levels. There's a basic level, a merit level, and an excellence level. And the one thing that's nice is, we're competing against communities that are of the same size of us. So we're not going to be against Norman or the metropolitan area, just communities that are in the same size as we are. So, you know, we may not be able to do what an Edmund can do, but we can do what other communities that are our size can do. And so we are actually considered a large community, which is a population of 30,000 to 79,000. And under that particular criteria, if we just meet the basic level of certification, then we could receive $10,000 in grant money. But if we meet a merit level, which is the next level up, the nice thing is, it's actually a cumulative grant process. So you reach, you receive the 20,000 for merit, plus the 10,000 for basic. So we actually could receive 30,000. And then the beauty of it is, is if we reach excellence level, which there could be a very possibility that we do, you receive the 10,000 for basic, the 20,000 for merit, and the 30,000 that's for excellence. So we could receive a total of $60,000 for one year. And then next year, we would renew again, and then we would also reapply for the grant again. And so it is my understanding that the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust is committed to this issue and will continue to fund these grants at the local level. So I would like to highly recommend this council to consider this. This is something that I have a personal passion about, but I know there's a number of people in this community that are dedicated to improving the health of our citizens at the local level because local people make local change. So that's all I have, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain questions.
Is this the result of a community-wide meeting that we held at the CPN Heritage Center, maybe about a year or a year and a half ago, where the coalition or the alliance was actually forming, or maybe you were just like introducing yourselves to the rest of the community?
That was actually, this is actually an extension of that.
Okay.
This is actual legislation that was put in place, and what happened was, is our alliance was already doing something towards what we called Certified Healthy Businesses. And I've also mentioned in the past that the city, as an employer, can apply to become a Certified Healthy Employer through the business process. There is no money attached to the business itself, but that event that we held at the CPN Heritage Center was, it was called Certified Healthy Business, Creating a Healthy Business. And the idea was to teach employers how they could actually save significant dollars by implementing simple prevention wellness initiatives in the worksite.
We talked about Certified Healthy Communities then, too, or maybe that was just an extension of that. How do we even get that ball rolling?
Yes.
So, okay. So how do we see, I mean, where does the city fit into this? Who does, who would make application, actually go through all this? Do you already have a representative on the alliance?
We don't, I don't believe.
Tammy Johnson has attended from time to time, but that's kind of, representation is based on your employer, and so people come and go within the alliance, and then as their expertise is needed, they're called upon.
Mayor, it'll be James Bryce, he just doesn't know it yet.
I wasn't supposed to ask. Sorry.
Sorry about that, James. But we're excited about it. I mean, it's an opportunity, just another opportunity for grant funding that we could put toward any of the capital improvement projects that we have that are quality life or recreation or trail related.
And that would be my next question, is based on the scoring that we would receive, is how do we funnel the funding into projects? Is it something that the alliance has oversight of, or is it something that the city, as the applicant, determines?
I believe it would be the city that would be the determinant, but you can, the alliance would be more than happy to give advice on any specific issues, being that we do have expert knowledge in certain areas.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's a lot of ordinance information in here. Are we up to speed with ordinances pertaining to all these issues?
I don't know how we're going to rank on some of these.
Some of them you already do have in existence already. The Clean Indoor Air Ordinance covers the, all city-owned and operated properties are smoke-free indoors, so you reach a basic initiative right there. You also have all Shawnee Public Schools are 24/7 schools, so that policy is in existence. Pleasant Grove is also, I don't know if Pleasant Grove is part of the city. Is it? Okay, all right, so that is also. South Rock Creek is also a 24/7 school, but I believe that's a little further out.
There is a little bit of property inside the city as well.
Okay. Grove School says they're going to pass it soon, but we'll see how that goes. The other things are, you have a Social Host Ordinance already on your books, so you would reach merit level at that. Another one is frequent compliance checks to, for alcohol and tobacco issues. That is ongoing with current law enforcement. We also currently work with the ABLE Commission on that, so we have local law enforcement and statewide ABLE Commission that is working on that issue. So these things are already going on, and you can see, you've got basic initiative, you've got merit and excellence, that have all been met just in the first two paragraphs. As far as, we already have farmers' markets, there's a number of things that are already in existence that we probably wouldn't even have to address. I feel that through the past seven years that the alliance has worked with the city, that we've put some of these things in place before we ever knew that something like this could come about. And so the criteria is there.
Also, do we get points for that group that just took off again at 6:00 downtown that Teresa was telling me about? I don't even know who organized them, but they're walkers and runners and...
The 5K.
Yeah, Monday, yeah.
Yes. So those initiatives are already going on.
Wow, okay.
We're a great community, and I think that we need to be certified as a healthy community.
Okay. Want to get an agenda back here?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? All right. Can I go to item 10? Item 10, Consider Approval of Certified Healthy Community Grant Application. Our motion by Commissioner Stevens.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Winneringer to have James Bryce apply for our Certified Healthy Community. All right. Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Winneringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens. I'm sorry, Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good, thank you. Item 11, Consider Agreement Between the City of Shawnee and Oklahoma Environmental, Inc. For Doing Mitigation and Cleanup Work For the Oklahoma Corporation Commission On Independence Street Just West Of Center Street. All right. Want to give us a little background on this? Or just John?
John can certainly do it. This is Sinclair Station at the intersection of Center and Independence that had leaky tanks for years. I'll let Mike Kennedy from the Oklahoma Corporation Commission tell you about the details about how we got to this point and a little bit of the background on the program that the state has to clean up these sites. But where it falls in this instance is a part of a property owner's property and a part of our city right of way. So Oklahoma Corporation Commission's been working on it for a long time in cooperation with the city to get it cleaned up, to study the actual plume under the ground. There've been several times when the soil and the water, the underground water have been tested. They pretty well think where the, know where the area is now, so now it's time to go in and dredge out the dirt and the contamination and then put the road back. So I think it would be a good opportunity to let Mr. Kennedy come up and explain, you know, where the money comes from and probably a little bit more about the process because he'd be much better than I would.
Okay. And you might explain again, too, just like I asked you, how come the city of Shawnee is involved in a cleanup between an individual and the Corporation Commission?
Okay. My name is Michael Kennedy, I'm with the Corporation Commission, I'm a hydrologist. The Sinclair Station that was mentioned had a leak from the tanks, and the fuel from these tanks migrated downhill and got caught up in the utility trench which runs down the center lane of Independence Street. Also, in that utility trench is a water main, and I believe it's a 10-inch main, is that correct? A 10-inch water main. And there's also some, a little bit of the fuel that is following, we're pretty sure it's following, another utility trench that goes across the street and is getting into the sewer line, which is causing a vapor problem in the urban Housing Authority building that is right there, I forget the name of it. For a while, we could not get into the road because it's very inconvenient for us to get into the road. We have to drill wells, shut the road down, and we couldn't do that, but at the same time, we couldn't find one edge of this gasoline plume. We knew where it was on one side, we didn't know where it was on the other. We theorized it had gotten into the middle of the road. Lucky for us, unlucky for the city, the water line ruptured, and you guys had to open up the road, and we saw it all right there. It was leaking out of the sides, your city workers were standing in gasoline. So Mr. Crywicky and the city manager graciously allowed us to get into the road to find out what was going on. We did an extensive geoprobing event, which is where we did a grid down the road and found out exactly where this contamination is. So in order to clean this up, we want to remove the center lane, dig out that utility trench. We are going to get engineers involved so that we take every precaution necessary, remove all the contaminant, put clean dirt back in, repave, and be out of your hair. The funding for all of this comes from the state's indemnity fund. It is a one-penny assessment on every gallon of gas that everybody in this room purchases in the state. It is not funded by the city, it is all funded through the state.
And the big question is, how long do you think the process will take?
Ms. Atkinson with OEI will be happy to address that. Ms. Atkinson is the consultant who will be actually doing the cleanup at the site. I provide the oversight and the releasing of the funds and the approval of the project. Ms. Atkinson's company does the actual work, so I'll let her answer any questions.
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Contained in the access agreement, we anticipate 30 days.
Okay. From a start date of...
October 24th. 25th.
Next week, 24th.
Okay.
Please note in our access agreement, we've got a 10-day liquid damage clause that we put in there.
To stay within the targeted...
Date.
Date, okay, okay, all right. So what we're talking about here is shutting down that portion of Independence while this work is being done. And we have all kinds of drawings in here about traffic flow during that time, and where the work will be done, maybe concentrations of contamination on that section of Independence.
I know it's a neighborhood, and if any children were like me when I was small, I got into everything I possibly could. So we will take every precaution necessary to make sure that nothing is left on the site so nobody can get into it, because it's gasoline, it's explosive, and we want to get it out of there. I know that the school had some objections to shutting down the intersection, we will not be shutting the intersection down. The detour signs that OEI will be putting out will be detailed for any drivers so that they know exactly where to go to get around. It will be an inconvenience, but it's less of an inconvenience for this to happen than to turn on your tab and have gasoline come out of there.
So the city of Shawnee is out zero money, is that correct?
Correct.
No, we don't have to pay for our own road reconstruction or anything like that?
No, we replace what we take out. So your road will actually improve. It's a bit of a rough road over there and...
Well, can you leak a little bit more then? I mean, you know, you take your time.
Since we are taking out the majority of the road, if you wanted to, you could come in at the same time and repave the rest, if you wanted to.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. All right. What do you think?
Motion to approve.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Stevens.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winneringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, Acknowledged Sales Tax Report Received October 2011.
Unfortunately, it's not that great.
Don't field a messenger.
That's right, don't field a messenger. The October sales tax receipts were down about $77,000 compared to last year. We received $1,309,000, and compared to the budget, we're down 3.47%, or approximately about $195,000. But on a good note, some of the other revenues are coming higher than anticipated, so right now, we're right on target for budget today.
Oh, because other types of taxes are coming in higher? Okay.
Do we know, I mean, I don't know if anybody knows why this is happening. It sounds like some of the other surrounding areas are doing all right, and we're suffering a little bit more.
Well, hopefully with coal...
My theory was, I'm sorry?
Hopefully with coals, we'll see an increase.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so. My theory is, we've had a tremendously hot summer, which drove electric rates sky-high and our water rates are high, and gasoline is extremely high during the same period. When you take those kind of three things into consideration, that's probably a big cause and effect of this whole...
And actually, one of the largest increases that we saw was the electric franchise fee.
Yeah.
That was up $50,000 in one month over budget.
Wow.
So I think once that kind of gets packed down, when you take it away, extra money out of people's pockets, just to pay for gasoline and...
Right, and then people have more disposable income.
Right.
So hopefully we'll see an increase.
Any questions? Thank you. Item 13, Consideration and Action on Staff Recommendation to Update City Worker's Compensation Leave Policy, Non-Union Employees Only. Pretty straightforward, just to match the state requirements. Yeah. Is this anything we budgeted for? Is it going to affect our budget at all?
Generally, when we have injuries, we pay anyways, if some is legitimately injured from day one, so it doesn't really affect us, but if for some reason there was a reason why, we just want to make sure that commission action that was taken in 1990...
'04, Celeste.
'04, in 2004, set a three-day limit. We just have to expand it so that we're in compliance with state law, so.
Okay, all right.
What's the limit they're asking for?
Five or ten days.
Five. And we're currently three.
We're currently three.
You've been a series of numbers over time.
Move to approve.
Section to approve by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Stevens. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winneringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 14, Consider Bids, A, Tapping Machine Valve Insertion Equipment. Please let's open.
Okay, on the first page, we opened bids on the valve insertion equipment. We've got two bids, one from Water Products of Oklahoma for $47,200, one from Hydrastock at $37,519, and we want to defer it to the next meeting and check them out.
Still move.
Okay. A motion to defer to the next meeting by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winneringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 14B Biosolids Land Application Apparatus, open.
We opened bids on this, we got two, one from Warren Cat was an O bid, and one from Mardell Brothers Quality Trucking Equipment for $304,341, and we want to defer this and check it out, too.
Yes, yes, okay.
Still moving.
A motion to defer by Commissioner Sims, seconded by Commissioner Stevens. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Thank you.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winneringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 14C, Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Project, COS-PW-11-O2, open.
Okay, this item is a bid opening for our Safe Routes to School project from the junior high on North Union, northward across 45th to the second driveway of the parking, or the apartments driveway. We had several bids. First bid we opened was from CP Integrated Services from Oklahoma City. Their bid was $105,959.36. The next bid opened was SAC Services, Inc. out of Oklahoma City. Their bid was $105,959.36. Their bid was $119,690.25. Bid from ATech Paving out of Edmond, their bid was $148,960.50. Next bid was from Shell Construction, Inc., their bid was $133,334.50. Next bid was from Parathon Construction out of Edmond, their bid was $87,352.50. Next bid was from Wade Construction from Meeker, Oklahoma. Their bid was $93,523, even. Next bid was from Rootage Construction, Inc. from Oklahoma City. Their bid was $111,989.90. And the last bid opened was from CGCLC from Edmond, Oklahoma. Their bid was $103,734.95. And our estimate, what we got budgeted, is at $92,000. Recommend to defer this item until the next meeting so we could do the bid tabulations and come back to this body with a recommendation. I would like to note that $62,000 of this project is from the YODOT grant, so we're, we got city money minus the 62,000, so to speak, so we got budgeted 30,000 for our portion.
Move to defer to the next meeting.
All right. A motion by Mr. Sims to defer to the next meeting.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. 14D, Cutting and Mowing of Frank Weeds and Cleanup of Trash and/or Debris.
As in years past, we've only received one bid on this, and this is our contractor that we've used historically for, for many years for this service. This particular contract is for our nuisance abatement services, and so when the city orders property cleanup of trash and debris, or orders the lawn mow or, or similar type actions, and the property owner does not, does not take action, then the cert, then the city uses contractor to do such work and bills the contractor's rate plus an administrative fee to the homeowner, which is ultimately a lien is placed on the property if that's not paid. G&amp;G Services is, has held this contract for the previous two years, and held the contract the two years before that and beyond that as well. And seeing as they are the only bidder, and their prices are reasonable, in fact, this is the same, I think it's identical to our current prices. And so staff is comfortable should the commission wish to award this tonight.
Do we need to read bids out loud at all?
Just one, or no?
I would just, yeah, the, I mean, it's G&amp;G Services, of course, we've got a menu of items here. I would just defer to the city attorney. Do we need to read all of these into the record?
No. Okay. Okay, so we have a recommendation by staff to go ahead and accept this bid. Is that your recommendation? It's your pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Winteringer to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Sims?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 15, New Business.
Madam Mayor, no new business this evening.
Item 16, Administrative Reports.
Just one this evening. Rex is gonna come tell us about.
About Saturday?
We're having a big report this weekend.
Well, it was a successful event, to say the least. The weather was perfect. We estimate there were 2,000-plus people that attended. The rotary that served the breakfast and used that as their fundraiser for their community service project, I think, they said that they well exceeded their estimates on how much money they were gonna make. And it was just, it was a great day.
Everybody is to be commended that worked on it, volunteered for the day. It really was a wonderful event. I know there are probably some cleanups and things to do better next year, but it was a, it was a great day for that event, too.
Rex, tell everyone how it's grown over the last three years.
Well, it started out as, four years ago, it was just, basically, we had a electric riddle, and we started maybe 10 pancakes.
Yeah.
And two, two planes flew in, and it's just, it's grown and evolved since then.
And how many planes do you think came in on Saturday?
I'm still trying to get that number, but there were.
50 plus?
I would say around 50, yeah. We, we did sell quite a bit of fuel this time.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And the airshow was, was really impressive. It was really good.
It really was.
And thanks to you guys for your support and for the community, so.
Yeah, the community really came out for this one, too. Yep. I have to say that I did not eat any pancakes in the morning because I took a biplane ride. So I thought that was the safest.
The community thanks you, too.
Yeah. Yep, thank you, Rex.
Madam Mayor, that's all this evening.
Okay. Item 17, Commissioners Comments. Oh, was that at Kids' Base Park today? I want to thank the Parks Department for spreading all the mulch, and thank Lowe's again publicly for all the work that they did. It is very, very nice out there. Great improvement, great improvement. Okay, item 18, does anyone have anything else? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winteringer. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll open up the Shawnee Municipal Authority Meeting, October 17th, 2011. We have a quorum. First item of business is Consider Approval of Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll, please.
Sims?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, New Business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Item four, Motion to Adjourn.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Sims.